Great, thank you. Well, as I just said, that was a lot of fun.
Yes, good job, you guys.
Thanks to the committee members for going through the applications and selecting the winners, and I think you guys had more fun than anybody.
There we go. It's because Jenna's joining the teams meeting, so she can present later.
Gotcha.
So we have a full agenda tonight, including the budget and the design project, so I will skip over my president's report and turn it right over to you, Tara.
All right, well, I'm gonna keep my report really quick and just.
We still gotta approve the order of items for the regular consent agenda.
And I am happy to move to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion passed, thank you.
And request to remove any items.
Does anybody wanna remove any items?
No, thank you, on my end.
Okay.
No, thank you.
All set then.
And this is a German school.
It's a party.
There's a German school meeting here today.
Should we just take those and push them out the door later?
They brought their own snakes. All right, well, I just wanna say one more time, congratulations to the Meyer Scholarship winners. It's always a lovely ceremony and thing to do, and it was really gratifying to read all the essays, and I'm really pleased with the recipients that were chosen. I'm so glad that we get to do this every year. And then I just wanna announce that we finally have a seed library here at Bloomfield Township Public Library.
What a great project.
Yeah, here's pictures, I'll just pass them down. So a township resident named, what's her name, Rosalie La Drew. She is a township resident and a life scout in Scouting America, which is formerly the Boy Scouts. She is working on achieving her Eagle rank, and she contacted the library and asked if she could do this project in building a seed library for the library. It turns out that Drew Huzer, who is one of our adult and teen services librarians, was also an Eagle Scout in the exact same troop that Rosalie is in. And so he was her connection to the library and helped facilitate the growth of.
Nice.
Our little seed library.
It took root.
It took root.
So good.
Here at the library. And it's blossoming out on the adult display. It's called New Books You May Have Missed, it's on the backside. So I encourage you to take a look at it. Rosalie built the box, I have no idea how they consulted each other, but she built the box. She got all the seeds donated, she created the little envelopes, labeled them all, and brought that to us fully formed.
Oh, nice.
Awesome.
Yeah, so we'll start to promote that over time and shout it to all of our residents. And that's all I have for my report.
Wonderful, thank you, Tara. So that takes us to our first standing item, which is the budget. Anybody have any comments or questions on the expenses of the budget? I just had two on page seven. We've got two items here, one is for federal paving, the other for professional grounds, maybe.
Yeah, the $29,000 for federal paving was the repair of potholes, the resealing and striping of the parking lot. The striping of the parking lot was half of the cost, which was a surprise to me, yeah. But as you know, that parking lot was in pretty bad shape. It's still not in great shape, but at least it looks a little better now. The professional ground services are a regular landscaping company, and that's just the monthly fee that we pay to them.
Yeah, what's that? That's new?
Not a new company. We hired them a few months ago.
Oh, okay, so it is.
Yeah, it is. At the beginning of the fiscal year.
Okay.
Is that when they took over? Yeah.
Thank you, Tara. And then if you look at page nine, this is a budget year-to-date. All of this is in line, I really like the way we do this with the percentages. The only thing that's kind of an anomaly in my mind is the projects line. So we've got 2.7 of projects for the year, we've only spent 10% of that. That's a good guy, obviously, and it gives us a little more firepower when we think about the design project. Two pages later, you'll see our reinvestments, you know, the lion's share of it is at 4.73%, which I think is a fantastic return as you think of interest rates declining. And this is the latter strategy that Matt always talks us about, so we're still getting the benefit of the older rates. There's no other comments, we have a motion to approve. It's on page 12, and I'm happy to read it. It's, I'd like to move to approve our monthly cash disbursements in the form of the checks noted for a grand total of $708,051.86 in the subcategories you see in front of you.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now the fun part, the call to the public. Anna?
Yes, I'm here on behalf of SOC and continue our endeavors to do stuff for our staff. This month, we are doing bingo.
Bingo.
Favorite, yes. My favorite, so I'm shameless. Selling bingo tickets.
Oh, you sell a ticket and then someone wins?
Yeah.
How much are the tickets?
They're a dollar a ticket, or five for three dollars.
Okay.
So, and we're working on, I can't remember what we were having planned before September, but Jane, Nicole, and I are always this be- 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 we're just thinking about this stuff, so. And we're trying to make a point now to attend our staff panels to remind staff that we are here for them. You know, if they have anything they wanna share with Tara and Catherine, they don't feel like they can go directly to them, which I can understand, but that's okay. Then we will, by all means, do it for them. So, for, you know, we'll continue to do that going forward. One of us attend at least one every week, and there's two a week. And on a side note, I just wanna make sure you all got your invites to Karen's 50th work anniversary.
They're in your grave holder.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Fifty years Karen Almott has worked here, she is a library page, we call her Nancy Drew. Bless her heart, on a Monday, she'll be looking for a book, on a Friday, she'll come to the conference. And I'm thinking, what book was that? I told her when I first started working here, I said, you know Karen, you used to call me super page. I said, you bring up one circle. Because she is just absolutely fantastic. So if you make it, we'd be honored to have you. Thank you for the hand, your farewell. And it just floors me that she's been your choice as long as I have.
Wow.
Thanks.
And it's not a surprise, is it?
No, and so cute. I mean, if you talk to her, she's like, this many days until my anniversary.
Oh, that's so sweet.
Yeah. Yes, it's very nice.
That's cute.
Yeah, so, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Okay, unfinished business, which is on page 36 of your decks.
Yeah. Yeah, so this is to revisit the strategic plan conversation that I opened at the July meeting. Just to recap, our strategic plan is from 2022 to 2023 to 2025. And I was just wondering from this board if there were any thoughts on maybe extending that plan for another couple of years, or if you want us to hire a new consultant and do one from scratch.
I'm in favor of extending the one we have currently as we are embarking on a major piece of the strategic plan.
And this was the first year, I believe, that we reduced it from four years to two.
Yeah, the la- I remember the last strategic plan we did, they said that they recommended a five-year with the option to renew it for another couple. This year, she said three to five years with that same kind of a screening in place or a way that you can kind of extend it.
A lot of the goals in the strategic plan are ongoing. So, um, so it almost makes sense to, um, to continue reaching for these goals until a new need arises.
Right. I'd like to hear from Catherine, because she's the one who sort of spearheads on what your feelings are about.
I would love to extend this for a minimum of two more years, so we can complete the big goal of reimagining our library spaces. I'd like to be able to update all the documentation with the new year so that, you know, our community doesn't think that we are neglectful in creating a new plan. But I think it's solid for a minimum of two more years, if not longer there, evergreen goals, like Danny said.
I like that.
Could I bring something up?
Please.
I'm not quite as fast as everybody. I think I agree with all the statements made, that have been made, but I think the plan is missing something. And that is a statement in one way or another relating to artificial intelligence and the application in the library. When we did this plan two years ago, nobody was really thinking about that.
You are, right, yeah.
But now it's here, and.
That's true.
So, I don't know exactly how we add that. Do we add it at the level of a fourth major strategic or something?
Or is there some kind of objective toward?
Well, one of the goals under Enhance Our Core is offer access to innovative technology resources, support and education to provide robust digital experiences at all stages of life. So I think we could say that exploring the use of AI in the library setting could call it out.
Okay, something like that, that's very explicit and uses the term AI and its appropriate application to a library, so.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, I've, we've formed an AI committee, and so we could, we could say that that, we can tie that back to the strategic plan and say that that's one of the goals that they are trying to work on.
So I don't think you need to hire a consultant to have, make up some wording for that. Maybe the wording you just did would be, something like that would be appropriate.
Okay.
I don't really feel like we need to change the wording of the Enhance Our Core part of it. I hear what you're saying, but I feel like, you know, it's gonna be AI, and then it's gonna be something different, and then it's gonna be something different. And any one of these that could, and I think if we're making a broad statement like that that is specific to the types of resources that we're supporting and educating and connecting folks to, I think it falls up underneath there. And I think the way maybe to explain it is how Catherine has done all of the activities that fall up underneath there. And by saying we formed a committee to look at it, any of the other activities that we're doing that fall up into that area. I only say that because I think there are other things that could come along or be new, different, oh, we should probably change it. And I think that was designed to incorporate that by a little bit more broad language. That makes sense?
No, I hear what you're saying, but I think it's worth having an explicit mention of AI. It's because it's that significant. So I understand your point.
Catherine, do you think that's enough to go for your goal?
I think so, I think I could maybe modify that one objective by including AI within that, and then I'll call it out specifically in the list of accomplishments.
The only thing that I would add to this discussion is that as we consider the amount of time that we might extend this plan, I would want the trustees that are on the board now to, um, to have the institutional knowledge and experience when we create the next one. So I just wouldn't wanna go too far out to when.
There's a whole new board.
Yeah, or to when, right. So today, the members of this board are, um, working through a term that expires in 28. So, just wanted to throw that out there.
So you're saying to not have it expire in 2028 because?
I wouldn't wanna go beyond.
Okay, not beyond that.
Well, I think that does deserve then the conversation, how far out do we wanna go?
I recommend 2028, because I think we'll be finishing up with our design project and then ready to look forward in the next five to seven years.
I'd be in favor of that.
All right, so we'll change it to 2028, we'll update that one goal to include AI. Any other changes?
This doesn't require a motion, does it?
I did put one in the memo.
Why don't we just see it at the next meeting?
Yes.
And then we'll approve it.
Does that feel good?
And strategic plan is not something that's written in stone. It was meant to, you know, be.
Flex.
It's a more, it sort of has no boundary. Absolutely, and as we face new challenges and opportunities to grow, we'll bend and flex.
Absolutely.
Great, well, thank you so much for that direction. That feels really good, um, and we'll continue to provide this report that Catherine so nicely puts together, and that will, this will give us kind of a launch pad to refresh our committees maybe and reaffirm the commitment to this current plan. Great, thank you.
Which takes us to semi-new business, which would be the calendar, please.
Yes, all right, so our proposed 2026 calendar, we talked about this at our special budget meeting a couple of weeks ago. But the proposed 2026 calendar includes 12 days closed to the public and two early closings. The two early closings are Thanksgiving Eve, which is Wednesday, November 25th, and New Year's Eve, which is Thursday, December 31st, and we'll close at 5:30 on those days to give folks a chance to go home and be with their families on those holidays. All the other days will be closed, it's our normal usual days that were closed. The only exception this year is July 4th falls on a Saturday. I'm proposing we be closed on Sunday, July 5th. This place will be a ghost town on that Sunday, as it usually is on the Saturdays of holiday weekends. Sundays are above and beyond staff's regular schedule, so it won't have an impact on staffing. I think it'd be a nice treat for those staff to have that whole weekend off, too. And remember that we have moved Staff Development Day to Veterans Day, which in 2026 will be Wednesday, November 11th. And that was to avoid conflicting with potential early voting days in May. So if you, if you have any questions, I'm happy to take those. If there's any discussion, we can have that. There is an action needed, and that's on page 38.
Aye, go ahead. I move to approve the proposed 2026 library calendar of holidays and closings as presented.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you for that.
That helps our planning.
Okay, do you want me to take the budget?
Sure.
So we talked about the budget, if you look at page 45, that's the key sheet. The differences we saw from the last meeting, investment earnings are up from the last meeting pursuant to the company's formula, so we're projecting revenues of 11.1. The costs generally are about the same, so our total base operating expenses are 8.1. That gives us cash, 3 million of positive cash flow. Then we put our capital projects on at a 5.7. That's the key number, we can talk about that when we get to the project plan in just a second. And then you'll see the surplus deficit, so we're running a deficit that's, which is fine, because we have quite a bit of money saved up, and we might have some additional based on the lack of, at least in my mind, projected CapEx for this year. So those are the only changes that we saw from the strategy meeting. If you go to page 49, this is the CapEx plan. You'll see on these, over these next two pages, if you look at the second page, you'll see there's 1.8 currently in that projected current spend. You've got the 5 million here for '26, '27 on the building, so 5.5 total. And as you guys remember from our presentation, the number that we last saw on that was significantly higher, so we're gonna talk about that some more with our dear friends. There's also a three, if you look at line 10 there, there's a $3 million boiler replacement, which I don't think we've talked about yet, but my understanding is we're approaching the end of the useful lives of those things, so it would be prudent to have something in reserve for that. And then, of course, the parking lot, which is on the next page, that's another 5 million. So those are the significant items, but when you go back to the budget, I think this is a good budget. I, unless anybody has any, anybody have any questions or comments or thoughts since our last meeting?
I'm sorry, the parking lot is?
It's on the second page of the capital and purpose plan, it's, I put the, I ordered the projects alphabetically, and it's update parking lot, so it's toward the bottom.
So line 10 on the second page, page 50 of our deck.
So I put in a placeholder number of 5 million for the parking lot. We have not had significant or substantial conversations about how much that would cost. That's just a guess.
Estimate.
An estimate, a guesstimate. I should've made it 4.9, sorry. 5.1.
But that's not in '26?
No.
Correct.
Right, okay.
I put that out a few years, yeah.
Right, and the boiler?
The boiler is out even further.
Right, that's what I thought, in '27 or something, '28.
We have three boilers, they've all reached their end of life and need to be replaced. And we have this giant shiller that's out on the side of the building, and that needs to be replaced, too. They're not failing right now, but we did have a problem with the boilers earlier this year. They're all running fine right now, but. You have any?
Sure.
10-year warranties.
That's, I'm.
Okay.
That's what it says.
Oh, okay. That, that information is a couple years.
That's it. So those were, Shane, you're going over the changes since our work session?
Yeah.
Okay, and there's nothing else?
True.
And we will refine this budget through the year. Remember again, this is just our preliminary budget that we will send over to the township tomorrow morning. In fact, Kathy and I will email the township supervisor and the township finance director and let them know that the board has passed the preliminary budget, and we are asking to levy the full two mils that we are approved to levy by our voters.
Anybody else?
So we have a motion.
Well, hang on.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
No, no.
I, before we vote on this, I personally would prefer we would vote on it as just the members of the board. We have some guests here, and I would prefer that they maybe were not here at the time that we did that, that voting. So I'm just asking that we listen to their presentation, and then we come back to this page, if that's acceptable to everybody.
So we're fine.
Okay.
So you wanna?
I think he wants to hear, let's talk about your plan before we approve this.
Yeah, I'm, I think that they, you may, you alluded to a number that's in the capital plan. I think we should have some discussion around that number before we vote on this, and we should have that discussion just as a board.
Okay, sure, sure.
And have some thinking, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I know the, the 5 million number that's in here was what, the information that I had at the time we prepared this.
Right, right.
Yes, we've got new information now.
New information, so I think we should discuss that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we're putting a pin in that for right now, and then we'll have our library design discussion. Okay. All right.
Do we, do the gift fund, though?
We can do the gift fund, I don't have a problem with that.
You wanna do that now, and then do the journal fund later?
Whatever, whatever you want.
Sure. So the gift fund, motion.
I think, Dani, you have it right up, you wanna read it?
I do, but do you need to talk about it at all, or no?
I can just say that the gift fund, we always, we don't assume any gift funding except for the Meyer Scholarship, which we take every year. And then we update this monthly as gifts come in. As you know, our friends are extremely generous and usually give us between $60,000 and $70,000 every year. So the gift fund budget is just sort of an updated as we go.
Okay, I'm happy to make this motion. I move to approve the preliminary gift fund budget as attached for fiscal year April 1, 2026, to March 31, 2027, in the following amounts for the support and maintenance of Bloomfield Township Public Library, $700 revenues and $162,195 expenditures.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I approve.
Great, okay. Okay, so we're moving on to the next item, which is our library design project. This is a very exciting, very exciting time and moment in this project. I just wanna say a couple of things before we move on to this project. Ever since I started working here 12 years ago, we have had empty shelves in the library, and we have talked about some way of refreshing spaces around the library. We had a lot of momentum build up and built the commons area, which I think was a great success, because you know the pandemic came along and just cooled all the momentum we had there. Lots of changes, five years later, we are finally back to a point where we can start looking at refreshing the spaces around the library. The building was renovated in 2008, so it's been almost 20 years that we've been living with the same carpet, living with most of the same furniture. We're open seven days a week, we get about 800 people in our door every day, so that's a lot of butts in seats and a lot of wear and tear on our building. We've been through two strategic plans in my time here, and both times spaces and redesigning areas in the library was a big part of those plans. So this is something we've been trying to do for many, many years. Staff have spent lots of time gathering data, making observations. Jenna has poured over all the feedback from our strategic plan, and so much of that is related to the building. The comments that you all read every week, almost every month, invariably have a half a dozen or so comments about, I need a place to pray, why don't you have this space, we want this kind of space, I hate these chairs. So this is something that is really, really, really needed.
Do you ever get any positive comments?
Yeah.
Lots of people think our building is beautiful, yes, yes.
And, and they love the span. Oh, that's for her, yeah.
Lots of people say that they bring their family and friends from out of town here because they're so proud of this building.
Oh, that's good to hear, okay.
So we want to honor that, that feeling that our community has and make this library even better. One of our former trustees used to say that we're an A library, but we wanna be an A-plus library, and this is one of the ways we can do that. I originally thought that we would just buy some new furniture and rearrange some things, and it might cost maybe a million or two dollars.
Ikea.
Right.
Not past 20 years.
But as you know, as you've seen from the discussion we had last week, the scope has expanded considerably. We are now talking about building about seven new rooms as part of this project. But I don't think that those are frivolous additions to this project. I think they're really needed. Again, prayer's places, a dedicated program room for adult and teen services. You know, we're not talking about adding places that aren't going to impact the public. The vast majority of this plan is impacting public spaces. So, there are, Jenna and Chloe are gonna talk about the budget number, that is a big number. They're gonna talk about the opportunities that there are to flex that number a little bit. And I'm just hoping that we can be bold as a board and commit to this plan and commit to all the parts of it, because I think that holistically, it's gonna be a wonderful change. And this library is gonna be even more beautiful, and we'll be even more proud of it than we are today. So that's my piece. I will turn it over now to Jenna and Chloe. So please stand by while we do a little digital finagling here.
Is this the same deck we were talking about?
Nope.
No, it's a, a little.
Reimagined.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, we really are going to focus on the budget today, so we'll walk you guys through that.
Right. I should be sharing my screen, is it?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
There it is.
Thank you.
And you sure you don't need me up there?
If you were, Hannah, you would. You know what, we're gonna do it today.
Okay.
But if you wanna join us at any point, please do, we would love to have you.
Okay.
So as Tara said, I'm Jenna, and this is Chloe, and we're here today representing C2AE and Red Walker Design Collective to talk a little bit more about the project. Perfect, thank you. So the rest of our team is made up of Jared Seacor, Dennis Jensen, and Marie Arrington, who are focused on the project. We are here today to represent this group, but wanted to make sure that they were noted as well. So we wanted to request a vote today, and we wanted to talk a little bit about what needs formal approval and what is ongoing conversation and consideration, and actually guidance that we are looking for you to provide to us. So really, what we need approval for is the general design direction, the overall plan, as well as some of these big ideas that we've talked about, because that would trigger us to be able to move out of schematic design and into design development where we actually make all the design decisions and get real costs, you know, real design decisions. So, again, just to kind of recap very briefly, the big ideas include relocating holds. There you go. Reworking the welcome and circulation desk, moving the coffee and vending to the magazine room as well as the connector, which we'll be adding between youth and the relocated teen area. Relocated service desks throughout, and then the relocation of local history and archives, and then additional program spaces and study spaces throughout the library. So that's kind of very high level, what we're looking for. But we also understand that we really need to dig into the numbers. So talking to Tara and the design committee, you know, it's a little bit of a chicken and an egg situation. We can't get full cost when we don't have design, and we can't get the design, finalized design, until we get approval to move forward in a direction. We don't wanna bring in all the team members, design something fully, and then have to have you pay for a redesign. We want to keep moving in this general design process where, once we have a go-ahead from your team that these big ideas make sense, then we can get the design going, we can get the contractors involved, and we can start. Then we can get the design going, we can get the contractors involved and we can start to get these cost estimates revised to real budgets. So just wanted to kind of frame that, that this is a cost estimate based on square footage number. So we want to break that down a little bit. And talk about that in more detail. Yes. So the big number that we're going to talk about today, so the project subtotal, so this is really your furniture finishes, equipment and construction. All of those as it stands today, um, you know, based on if we were to design it, right? So build it today.
Build it today.
Um, this is a significant scope change from the twenty twenty three pre-designed document like we talked about. Originally, it was more furniture, maybe a couple of finishes. This is really looking at a full refresh of the library. We're talking about all new finishes in pretty much every area except for like the entry space. We're talking about all new furniture as well as additionally some construction, new rooms and the mechanical, electrical and plumbing requirements that come with that. So breaking that down further, so we have the furniture finishes and equipment and shelving budget. So this is really a placeholder. Um, there's a couple of things that go into this that again, we'll talk more about in design development. So one of the big things that we did was ask our partner at American Interiors for a good, better, best pricing. And we selected the mid-grade so that we could have some pieces in that budget that are that more millennial. Um, classic design, some of the things that we saw and really love because of that Cranbrook connection and the connection with mid-century design in general. So that number will will change as we go into design development and come down as we solidify which pieces we're actually using. And just as a background on how we calculate those numbers, we looking, we're looking total at this fifty five thousand square foot number as kind of the general square footage being. Modified for this project. So we are given a square footage number as those good, better, best numbers and then we just factor that out. So there's not any calculation of individual pieces or exact product. These are just benchmarking numbers from across the industry. All right, so one of the other big placeholder numbers that's within this overall budget, and again, these are all really based off of the square footage. And these are already padded a little bit just to make sure that we have space as things adjust. Um, but one of the big ones is the mechanical, electrical and plumbing. So we have included our M E P engineers as we've gone through this process. You know, they've provided um, valuable feedback, written a narrative and gone through the design with us. But they have not started doing any calculations or anything that's really detailed into the engineering portion of this project. And we don't have them do that until we move into design development when the floor plan is solidified. Because we want to avoid rework and additional costs to you. So that will again, become even more detailed as we move into design development and really understand the scope further. Then breaking down the soft costs, so these are really, it's a reserve fund of unexpected costs that may occur during the project. So the two big ones are owner costs, which we have a five percent fee for. So that is really. These are just numbers that we're holding in reserve in case something happens. There's something that we changed during the course of the project, like after we've installed something, maybe we say, oh, we don't love that. Maybe we want to change it at that point.
I would just pause to say that's actually something you would say you would want changed, not us, um, not we, like it would be the owner. So the board, the the staff. Um, your, if you see something that you want changed, we usually hold this contingency for those types of situations.
Um, and then the secondary one is really for, we're in an existing building, we're doing a renovation. There may be things that come up that are surprising. We may run into a structural wall that we didn't realize was structural. So that's what that cost is for. Again, these are not costs that we are necessarily spending. It's just something to hold in case we come across an issue. And that way we can continue moving forward with the project without stopping and coming back to the board and saying, hey, can we get approval to go through this item?
Yeah, so how we tend to utilize that just to kind of reinforce what Chloe's saying is we don't want to touch these numbers. Actually, we don't want to spend any of this, you know, combined nine seven, nine eighty and three twenty six. We hold them as permission to, if something happens, the design committee and project team are allowed to spend money up to that percentage. Without having to pause the construction, come back and request additional funds so that the project can keep moving forward. Um, some clients choose not to hold a contingency. They want to have us come back every time and ask. But just know that would interrupt service at the library and interrupt the construction schedule and installation. So we just tend to hold those as that protection to keep the project moving. If that makes sense.
Um, so things I want to review up until this point as well. So again, these are all. Square footage numbers that we're looking at and then these are percentages of that. So this is a little bit inflated and then on top of that, we're adding this fifteen percent contingency here. So then moving on to the next.
Excuse me, may I ask a question? What is the A slash A fee?
This is the architecture and engineering fee, so this would be our fee.
And that was a flat rate based on the contract that was negotiated with C between C two A E and the library. So that fee. Does not change as long as the scope of design doesn't change. So that's where in, we're writing in those contracts are so many rounds of revisions. So if we bring the engineering team in and we do all this design and then we have to redesign, that goes outside of the agreed upon scope. So that is a fixed cost as long as we continue to move forward in this process.
And it's already been agreed upon.
That's already been agreed upon and that's the set number.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I think Dennis may have said that it's a percentage of fee, which isn't how it is for this project. It's a, it's a flat fee.
Yeah. All right, so then this total. So this eight point two is the total of the soft costs down here and of the hard costs. Again, if we build the project today.
Factoring in having to use all of those contingencies, worst case scenario.
Yes, all of the. And again, I'd like to reiterate, these are general square footage costs. Then we're putting this additional, you know, percentage on top of it. And then the final number we're going to talk about, the big number is. Again, the escalation for going up to bid in summer of twenty twenty six. So.
Inflation tariffs unknowns in the built environment right now. There's been a lot of economic uncertainty. So we tend to hold between five and fifteen percent on all of our construction projects right now because things are really volatile. The cost of every material is volatile right now.
So that's the top number for the summer bid. And then the secondary number, nine point five. Is for if we were to phase this project out. So we know that there are concerns about closing for any amount of time. So that's what that is factoring into. And then we are also suggesting that we actually do several more budget checks. Again, this is a very high level cost estimate based on the square footage costs. What we are suggesting is that we do a budget check at fifty percent design development, which will be around October. Um, and that we would have a lot more information and be able to clearly say it's going to come down to about X. So I think that one would be especially beneficial. And then a lot of times we also do one at a hundred percent design development. So that's really when all of the client decisions are completed. Um, and then at fifty percent construction documentation, which is when we are actually detailing out things like walls. And really getting into those details for the construction manager. So two things to note with that. So design development, as we're going through that, we'll make all of the selections for the finishes, the furniture, we'll know what those things are. Um, we can at that point, we can bring on a construction manager. We can have some of those conversations.
Or if you choose to work with the contractor you've been working with, we could engage them on this early pre-designed work to get their hard costs.
Yes. And then the other thing is that if we still are not happy with where we're at, that's when we would talk about doing add and deduct alternates. So what those are is basically we pick an item and we say, this is the base bid. So for instance, you could say, we want this wall to be Jipboard. We want it to be drywall. And then in the add alternate, it would be glass. So that is also something that we can do and that allows us to get that budget pricing from the construction manager to make sure that we're on par with where we want to be. Um, we'll look at each individual item and decide, is that an add alternate or a deduct alternate? Um, and then.
I would also say before we even get to add and deduct alternates, these are the points when we actually are still designing. So when we get this fifty percent number and we see what that is, we can continue to design, to make different decisions, to either adjust the scope, look at different products. To make sure that we're hitting that that target budget number, once we have that number set from your group.
Yeah.
Cool.
All right. So moving on to really talking about the schedule. So I know this is a little small. I'll go through and point out which ones. Um, so this is really showing twenty twenty five through twenty twenty seven. So twenty five is in blue, twenty six is in green and twenty seven is in orange. So I'm going to refer to where we're almost. So after we move forward with schematic design, the next phase would be design development. Again, that's when we're making all of these decisions about the products and finishes. So design development approval would be in December of this year. So that would come with a ninety one thousand dollar soft cost. Again, that's been agreed upon already. I'm just kind of showing it split out.
And put like that's, that would come from the twenty twenty five year end.
And then in February, we would have a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars worth of soft costs, again, pre-agreed upon. For construction documentation to be completed in February. And then two months later, in April, we would have bidding and procurement. So that would be completed, again, with a twenty five thousand dollar soft cost that's been pre-negotiated. After that, there would be some sort of closure that would need to happen. We can talk about what exactly that looks like. So.
If there's no phasing.
Yes, if there's no phasing. So closure to be determined. And then we would expect that construction would be complete at that point in December. And this is that cost that we have not talked about, that we have not solidified the actual budget for. But this would be eight point seven mil. And then two months later, the project would be officially complete and closed out. We would have time to do things like trainings. Um, ensure that all of the products are up to par. We do a lengthy punch list documentation, which is going through and making sure that there's no paint smudges or anything like that.
Before we release final payment to the contractors, everything is done and we've signed off and checked.
Yes. All right. So then the phased approach. So you're going to see here that design development, construction documentation and bidding and procurement are all the same. Where you're going to see the majority of the difference is in the phasing. And how construction is going to be complete. So I've done a very high level, assuming that we do the max amount of phasing, which would be four. We would have the first phase of construction complete in August. So that would be the youth area at two point five mil. And then three months later, in November, we would have phase two complete, which is really the entry area. So that would be approximately two point six mil. And then taking into account that we have the holidays here, moving into March, phase three would be complete. Which would really be kind of that majority of the of the library where all of the, all of the shelving and everything is, a lot of furniture.
And the new program room and the connector.
Program room and the connector as well as moving the local histories. So that would be around three point two mil. These numbers are very rough too, just to give you guys an idea. Um, so do that. And then moving into June, phase four would be complete approximately one point two mil, really just the back area where all of the existing um, study rooms are.
And just to note, this is one way that it could be phased. We would want to bring the contractor in to talk about what phasing could look like. It could be two phases. It could be three phases. You could do the back first. You know, there's lots of decisions that still need to be made. We just wanted to look at kind of what that's, again, worst case scenario looks like. And then what that impact is.
Yes. So then the impact of that, the difference between doing a single phase and doing up to four phases, we're looking at nine hundred thousand dollars worth of cost. And then it could be up to nine months difference in that as well.
So, you know, all that being said, we'll definitely have lots of time for questions and conversation. We are really looking for guidance. We know that we came into this project talking about one thing and then opened it up a little bit more and said, you know, what would we do if we could do it? So we've had many, many conversations with staff and the Matt group and the design committee to come up with what really we feel would be a wonderful plan to move forward. But we need to understand from your team, you know, what's that guidance on budget? Knowing how we figure out that number and what that worst case number is, if you have a cap, we will design to that cap. We need to understand more now that we've looked at it broadly, what is the realistic approach? So that when we get into real design, which is the design development phase, you know, conceptual design and schematic design are the big ideas. Now, when we really move into the next phase, we just need to know what are we, what are we aiming for? And as long as we know that, we can, it's it's a menu of options, right? We can pick and choose and kind of adjust how we're doing things to meet that goal. So we're not necessarily asking for any kind of approval on that cost estimate. We're not saying we need you to tell us, yes, we can spend that money. We are looking for guidance for that. But in order to get more detail, we do need approval on the direction so we can start getting into those design details. So that we can provide that more detailed cost estimate and approach. So. Conversation, any questions?
Yeah. Yeah. So thank you very much for going through that. I think we had a, we went through, I think it was an hour and a half meeting to go through this. And everybody is so excited about the project, as are you all. I don't like, we forgot about this part. I didn't have time for this part. So I think it's really good to focus on that. I can tell you that that number doesn't work for the committee. I'm going to speak for everybody. Um, but we can't, we're not going to be in a position to tell you what number does work for us tonight. I hope that's not what you're looking for.
Not tonight, no.
Yeah, so the the designs are wonderful. Tara and I have discussed them. We walked through the building and gone through it in the same room, which I would encourage all of you to do. It's really helpful to actually see what some of this is. So um, I think what would be helpful, I'd love to turn it over to the committee to ask all, any questions that you all have. But then to note that you may, you don't always get what you want. So we certainly not going to ask, we can't, we can approve that this design. Noting that the cost is too expensive and that we're going to have to change some things.
Yes.
I know there's a lot of contingency in there. I also know there's typically in any big project, a lot of overrun. So we would, you balance those two against each other and we're going to have to, we're going to have to go without something. We don't, we won't be in a position to tell you what that something is.
And we feel that that fifty percent design development check would be a really good benchmark for us to be able to have enough information to get a more. Realistic view of this by bringing in a contractor to give us realistic numbers um, versus just guesses, guess of it, yes. Uh, which is, yes, we're using industry standards. We're looking at other comparable projects, but. We're also in a different community and, you know, things are very volatile right now. So we feel it would be.
We put the cost page back up.
Absolutely. It'd be a really good.
I want to bit that page when you have a chance, um, the calendar, the calendar, because we'll be over two fiscal years, won't we?
Yes.
Wait, really? Is it three? Okay.
Yeah, technically twenty five, twenty six.
Yeah, our, our design fees through design development would cap at the end of this year and then, yeah, if we phase the project, which we expected to phase, would be twenty five and twen- or twenty six and twenty seven.
Okay.
Yes.
Are you talking fiscal or calendar?
Oh, when's your fiscal year?
It's, it's April.
Oh, it's April?
Yeah.
Oh, can you go back to that?
That's what I was curious about.
Okay, so. So this is one.
April one. I guess two.
And this is two.
Two.
Then into three.
Yeah.
Well, if you go to the next one.
Yep.
Is it the phasing? And also with the phasing, if you phase. So you would actually, you'd have, you could potentially end up with like the four point four.
Right, if we did the phasing one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm confused a little bit about the phasing.
Yeah.
Um. Because, and that's a big chunk of money.
A lot, yeah.
So our two options are. How many months and how many?
No, not necessarily. You're, you have a range between, like this is. You close, you finish the construction and there's one phase and you're done. And this is if you spread it out further.
Okay, so.
But you could technically do two phases or there's wiggle room in there, like you could do two phases. You could do the youth area and then you could do the entire adult and teen services in one phase, you know, and so there's flexibility there. I'm, I'm sorry.
I think, um, like we just said, we, we're not in a community that we can close.
Yeah.
So.
But maybe there's a way we can look at instead of like A, Z.
Yeah.
We can look at.
Maybe we can close for a week here and there and something is done or a day or.
But is that enough?
We also talked about, I, I would think, I would like to see a new one. I mean, I know you need input from us. This isn't any disregard for the average you've been on this.
Mm-hmm.
But it is two phases. So this stacks, I don't think a lot of people need access to the stacks and that's a, that's a lot of our square footage. So if we did phase one. and that's a, that's a lot of our square footage, so, if we did phase one where you move, you know, whatever you have to out of that, into some other temporary, and then you put it all back when it's done, I don't, I think four is a little bit excessive, and presumably, the cost would be between the two, and the timeline would be between.
Yes, exactly, and that's why we didn't break down every scenario. We'd also want a contractor to weigh in on that, to make sure we're more accurate, but we feel that, I think the two phases is really the best way to go, you could, youth is easy enough to do on its own, and quickly, and then, yeah, then you can move into the adult.
I know that we did a couple of the projects, like the floor out here, we did have people come in at night, and I don't know if that's an option.
It is.
It was not as disruptive, it did cost more, because it's, and so I'm wondering what that, how much that would increase, so that you wouldn't have to close it as much or as long as.
Yeah, that's a good, I don't know what that percentage would be.
I think the hard thing with this is that it isn't just flooring or just furniture, we're doing a full renovation. So, that is really where you're going to have a lot of that impact, because even though we have areas where maybe we're not doing heavy construction, like building new rooms, all of the shelving has to come out, new flooring has to go down.
Gotcha.
Then we have to bring everything back in, yes.
Right, okay. Multiple people on site at the same time, and have to work together, yeah. And I also, I'm, I don't know this answer, is that number for furniture and installation or any of the construction numbers?
I think that includes installation based off of.
No, is it, um, union or non-union?
Do you know? I don't think that we've broken it down.
I don't know if you guys got any requirements for that either, but that's something to consider, that would definitely have impacts on cost as well. So, we'll have to double check with that, I, I don't think they use union numbers for that, I think they use non-union. So, if you need union numbers, we would need to revise those too.
I think there's a couple of things too, so like we talked about, maybe doing two phases would be better. Um, so we can go back and talk about what that looks like, and I would maybe ask you guys, what areas do you think for the two phases? And then, we can have an internal discussion about that. Um, I do wanna say too, Dennis was not able to be here tonight due to a death in his family. So, this is something that, yes, he would definitely have more answers, um, I'm doing my best to speak to this. But we're happy too, if there are other questions, we can certainly have another meeting to review those, if that's helpful, or if you wanna send any emails.
I think since we're gonna need a lot of.
I was gonna say, it's gonna be an ongoing conversation, yes.
Board meetings, we can make a new building and ground, and then we can have Zoom, and you don't have to have, you know, some of the formalities involved. But, when, when you said you were looking for approval, why is that, why do you want that now?
It was, well, we can't design any further, like our, until we can move into the next phase. We're done, we've exhausted the scope of schematic unless we do more big ideas, but to get more detail, we, we need your approval to move to the next phase. Yeah, that was just written, I think it was how the contract was written, right?
I don't know about that, I just assume it's because it's a public government body, and so you all are the ones that make the decisions and, you know, these big decisions, so you would, we would need your approval to move forward with this project.
So, I think what you're asking is, do we, are we approving this essential concept, okay? Numbers still need to be worked out, but are we?
And I think, you know, we have some time.
I think that's reasonable to ask for that approval at this time, if there's the overall concept look like the right thing to do.
And I think we, as we said before, we have some time before we need that hard number of like, what's our cap? And what do we need to design back to, but I think that having that fifty percent, you know, aiming towards October, where we could get that fifty percent design development number, and work with the cost estimation team with a construction company, then we would have more information to really have you able to make an informed, educated, you know, decision on what your cap is. And then, we can revise the design to meet those goals, and we have lots of parts of this, we haven't made any final decisions on. You know, so, we have a lot of places we can still play to, to make that number work, no matter what it is. The big ideas will still be there, some of the more detailed asks that have come about may have to, you know, change, and the scope may have to adjust a little bit, but we believe we can meet these overarching goals, you know, within a budget, we just need to know what that budget is.
And Kathy and I can maybe crunch some numbers and do some forecasting and figure out maybe what we're comfortable with that, that helps us achieve the other goals we have, which is the parking lot, boilers and chillers down the road.
And the timing.
And the timing, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and this is very industry standard for us to come back and have to kind of understand what the budget is and redesign, and there's, that's built into our design schedule, it's built in throughout design development, some changes will happen during construction documents, and then that bidding and negotiation phase that you see on the, um, you saw on the calendar, that also is a time where we may have to value engineer something. If costs next summer come back totally different than what they came in, you know, in October of this year, we understand that, okay, now we've gotta come up, we might have to re-specify, we have to change something. So, that's built into what we expect in any project, yeah.
Any questions on that, are there anything else?
Can you go back to the cost page?
Yeah. You just really like that cost page, don't you? You wanna stare at this award?
I just wanna make sure everybody sees it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Again, we were, we were thinking five, you guys see at the bottom that eight point two, and you've got, they, you know, I don't, they're presuming that costs go up, I don't know why that would be.
That's never happened before, right?
There's the contingency I was talking about, so, okay.
Yeah, so, if you really, like, the hard costs are six point five for the current design, and then our fee is a set number, but these contingencies and these escalations are like up in the air, for sure.
Understood, but again, this is, this, we need to give them some guidance.
Right.
I'm not ready in this forum to start throwing numbers around.
I agree, I don't think you're ready to do that.
You have to have lots of conversation.
I think right now, maybe if, if, with all respect to you, I think maybe what we should just focus on now is, are we okay with the five or six, maybe seven goals that you had outlined on the first?
Big ideas.
Yeah, the big ideas, and does this overall plan reflect achieving those seven goals? And are we willing to at least approve that kind of concept, basically? Maybe that's what you're asking for, and then we need, as our president has indicated, we need to have some discussion about, what do we consider to be the not-to-exceed number for this program, that's what you wanna know.
Yeah, and you don't have to give us that number until after we get a more finalized number at that fifty percent, like, you know, we're not gonna design to your top dollar, we're gonna design to what we think is the right solution, and then try to work it to make it fit that budget.
For sure.
So, that's what I think you're asking.
In response to your, your queries, I was okay with all those big ideas, except I'm concerned about the connector. As I talked to Tara about today, I thought there was only one entrance into the youth room, so that if you're a parent, there's, you gotta corral, there's one way out. Maybe that's not why that's there, I just would like to think about that a little bit more.
Yeah.
But everything else on the big idea front, I like.
Let me go to that beautiful.
And I do wanna share that, that came directly from strategic plan feedback from the patrons, that was requested to have the connection between the teen and.
It was more interactive, so that a fa- a family comes with children of different ages.
You don't have to be in two places.
Then you could, like, the parent could be in the cafe area, they've got a teen, they've got a younger child, or they are near to both, if you will. And staff indicated that there were enough families that came in like that, so, we felt like that's a good space to, no, it's a good question.
Yeah, but.
Didn't, I think it used to be, I'm sorry, didn't there used to be a, I have this memory of.
There, there is a connector, but it's closed.
There used to be one, I mean, there were coming to the library a million years ago, and I thought there was some time.
It's a high density store, you know, for the articles.
They call it the back issues periodicals room, and it's a, it's a, it's just a hallway with movable shelving in it, but it's got doors, so it's very, it's not, it's not a thing you would think you can just wander into.
Okay, okay.
But I do think that it's important to note that we're having the meetings, the coffee chats with the public, and we're gonna have one specifically for youth, and that will be a great opportunity to send that out, and we'll have it here, we're gonna have it sitting here, we're gonna have a ways for people who can't join the coffee chats to provide feedback. So, if there is a significant number of people who are concerned with that, we'll have time to revisit that, you know? That's why that, that stakeholder engagement is such an important part of design. We can, we're plot, you know, respond to what we're hearing and seeing in all the research and all the data, but we also wanna hear from the people themselves.
Do you wanna also share about the MAC meetings and, um, 'cause I, I don't know how many folks here are aware of the number of meetings that we've had with staff.
Yeah, with me, did you want me to talk about that?
Yeah, you.
Tara?
You.
You. I'd be happy to.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, we've had two full se- at least two full sessions with our entire management advisory committee, MAC, which is all of our department heads and assistant department heads, poring over these plans with Jenna and Chloe and Dennis. And then, at least two other meetings in which it's been a major topic of conversation. One thing that came up about that area in particular, uh, that Shane just mentioned, is that it's nice for parents with little kids to be able to grab a snack out of the vending machines and go right back into youth without kind of bringing screaming kids that are hungry in through the rest of the library. Um, but I will say, the entire MAC group was very much on board with, um, moving vending into this area, making it more accessible to people, um, to grab a snack easily while they're in, you know, kind of in the heart of the library, versus practically leaving the library again to that corner of the cafe where the vending currently is. They feel like it makes it a more welcoming space to families with kids, to people who are here studying or working for long hours. And the MAC group, Anna, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but was very enthusiastic about pretty much every aspect of this plan.
Staff are very ready, ready for these changes.
Just from their observations and what they're hearing from our patrons as far as the needs, um, this answers many, many concerns that we've been hearing.
I'd like to make another note too about, specifically about this corridor and where the two entrances in the youth area are. We understand the concern about children eloping, that is a normal thing that we deal with in libraries all the time. You guys are lucky that you already had a separate youth area, a lot of times, we're building those separate youth areas. Um, one of the benefits of this plan too, is that we're relocating where that main service point is in here, so that they actually have access directly to this corridor, and we would likely plan to have that, as we are showing right now, open on that side, so that if a child wants trying to run down that corridor, that whoever's at that service desk would be able to grab them. It's a little light, but the, it's a U-shaped desk right here, yeah.
And we're no strangers to chasing kids, yeah.
So, I think that's.
Goes a lot of the territory, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Does that?
Yeah, that's okay.
Any other questions, comments, concerns about any of the big ideas, you know, specifically? While we even talk.
Does anybody wanna talk more about the process? So, I think what we're talking about is, I, I have some word changes on this motion that we can talk about in a second, but we'll prove the general principles that we're seeing here. Then, we'll talk, we'll talk costs with you and kind of.
Tonight, you wanna do that?
We can either do it after this meeting or schedule some other time, but I think we do need to have a range of what we can actually spend.
Well, you'll, maybe you guys will get together and.
Yeah, I'd like to do that, look at the budget a little bit and do some different scenarios and models, and then we can maybe present that to you and give you a better idea of what feels comfortable.
Again, we have time on our, we'll do that DD check around October.
Yeah. Yeah, and that would allow us to get more detail, so we can get those harder numbers, which would really benefit all of us, I think, to see.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, so if you look at page eighty-one, at the bottom was the proposed motion, which I'd like to modify, to say, what it currently says now, which is, I moved to approve the schematic design as presented by, you know, so-and-so, including design drawings, and then, then say, instead of what you see there, say, noting the current cost estimate, and any related changes remain subject to further review and approval. Does that work for everybody?
What page, eighty-one?
Anywhere, eighty-one, okay.
Can we say that again?
Yeah, especially for Lyndon's benefit.
Okay, so it's, I'm gonna, here's the current language that stays. I moved to approve the schematic design as presented on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, by C two AE and Reed Walker Design Collective, including design drawings, that's what you're seeing. Now, here are the new words, comma, noting the current cost estimate, and any related changes remain subject to further review and approval.
I think that's very good.
Yeah.
Got that, Lyndon?
Thanks, so how about I read it back to you? Absolutely.
Lyndon's gonna read it back.
To approve the schematic design is presented on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five by C two AE and Reed Walker Design Collective, including design drawings, comma, noting the current cost estimate per view and approval opinion, is that correct?
Noting the current cost estimate.
Noting the current cost estimate.
And any related changes.
Okay.
Remain subject. To further review and approval.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Uh, that was Judy and Joy.
Yeah.
Yay!
Okay.
Thank you, we thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for such a great presentation, for really explaining and breaking this down.
Appreciate your coming.
Yeah, and please express our condolences to your colleagues.
Yes.
Thank you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Deep dive into the budget and the timing and.
As they're gathering the things, I just wanna say that it, I thought that it was, I had kind of hoped that Rod Myers would talk a little bit about the brick. I know he does it every year, so.
I know, definitely you are.
But I was hoping that he would, because it, you know, it's so important for them to recognize, for them, for them to hear that the building means so much to so many.
In its physical sense, in its textural.
Yes. Sure.
Yeah, and that's honestly, I'm an architectural historian, and I master some historic preservation as well, and that is exactly why I went down that path of study, because place is so much to so many people through so much time,
Yeah.
that I think it's important to celebrate that heritage, which is why it's one of the pillars of our project.
Yep, 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 yeah.
Exactly.
Alright.
Great.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome to stay, we, I just have a few more minutes.
Other, other.
We picked.
Wait, no, we waited, we didn't have a budget.
We gotta go back to that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I was hoping you'd make us.
Oh, yeah, we did it again.
Oh, we're to the budget, that's right, yeah.
What she's trying to say.
So, see you later.
Playing it off, Texas snacks.
Thank you all so much.
I'll maybe come back.
Are we getting, was he in those?
Yeah.
Did you see the, did you hear the silence when you said that?
I was like.
Oh, yeah.
What?
That was four years ago.
I'm just trying to get through the speed.
No.
Um.
Our first meeting, Joan, if you might remember this, it went to about nine thirty, and I was like, oh my god, and I, for about first three minutes we were here, I don't know what was going on at nine thirty, but yeah, it was just.
So, back to the budget, which is page forty-five, and Keith, I'll turn over to you, but I would note that we're not approving that CapEx plan, we're just approving twenty-six, twenty-seven, which does have the five million in it.
Right, and that's, that, my only concern was, given the fact that we had such, and we've discussed it extensively now. So, if we are showing five million in the CapEx plan, and I guess we have a sense that we're actually gonna end up spending a little bit more than five million, so, should we revise that number to be, since the preliminary budget is supposed to represent everything that we know at the point at which we approve it, and we know the number is gonna be greater than five, maybe we should be showing a larger number, without necessarily committing ourselves to it. But five is, it's not a realistic estimate, I think, so I'm just wondering, but you're pointing out that.
I wanna kinda push back a little bit on that, because I think the, if you, if you guys look at that on page fifty, I think that one eight, that that one eight doesn't foot to the front, the front is two seven. And then again, this isn't the budget, this is the preliminary budget, the main point of which is to say to the committee, here's our budget for which we're accepting the full millage, that's the point of this, and we need the full millage now, that's for sure, based on what we saw there, so. It doesn't give me too much pause, and whatever number we put on here, I'm not comfortable with it. You know, we the, this, we all need to, you know, fee is it seven, is it eight, is it six, you know, yeah.
Right, it's two booths right now, yeah.
Okay, so I, I, I agree with every.
Some of the.
Which is why it is.
Point of view, you're good with just leaving it at five, knowing that we're likely to spend more.
For now.
But, okay.
Well, but I'm not sure we'll spend more.
But remember, it's a two fiscal year.
Not in that year.
Yeah, not in that year.
Is it that timeline?
That timeline.
And everything, not only is it more expensive, it's always longer, and we're gonna phase, yeah, so.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
Go ahead. Yeah.
Okay, fair enough.
So, we're gonna run over two fiscal years.
I'm not sure if it's higher, too high or too low.
Right, so.
For this period of time, I know the total is too low, but the total.
For this period of time, yes.
And over the next coming months, we will refine the budget even more, so we'll get more, and so we can adjust that number, as she was saying,
Okay.
if we get to that fifty percent of design development, and should we have maybe a better number, at that time, we can plug it in, and even, we, we, we can go up to like February and still adjust it, right?
Okay.
Fair enough. I mean, truth be told, October's.
Then, my concern has been addressed. I mean, truth be told, October's right around the corner.
Let's go ahead and just, let's, let's just do that.
Yeah. Great.
But at one point, I think we all agree, we need to decide what is that not to exceed number?
Yeah.
What makes sense for.
Right.
Absolutely.
You know, I think we all feel like, given the number, we're talking about moving some walls, changing some furniture, changing some, does that make sense, that it costs nine million dollars, you know, it's just.
Right, right.
Well, I think when she said, um, it's really covering almost all the square footage in this library, which is a vast difference.
Fifty-five thousand.
Well, no, she didn't, she didn't quite say that, what she's saying is that the figures are per square foot, so I think they just have kind of an industry standard number that they apply. Not the community, really, but. Yes.
And they do, that's what they, yeah, yes.
Because I think they're only applying that to fifty-five thousand square feet, that's the scope of our project.
Mm-hmm.
Which is about half the library.
Okay. So let's, let's just do that vote then, that's fine.
All right, on the budget then, Shane, do you have that page number, maybe, Chance?
Yeah, I do, forty-five.
I can figure it out, it's forty-six.
Thank you. You guys are running the meeting.
I'm happy to read it, unless somebody.
Sure, go ahead.
I move to approve on a functional and total basis, preliminary, preliminary proposed general fund budget as attached for fiscal year April one, twenty twenty-six through March thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven, and the following amounts for the support maintenance of the Loompa Taj Public Library, eleven million, one hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four is in revenue, thirteen million, eight hundred and fifty-six and one ninety-eight, and expenditures, the fund balance reserve shall be decreased by two million, seven hundred and eleven, forty, four hundred and sixty-four dollars. There's a plan to use fund balance for capital projects, including the library design project. Also, to approve on a functional and total fund basis, the amended general fund budget as attached for the current fiscal year April one, twenty twenty-five, through March thirty-one, twenty twenty-six, and the following amounts for the support maintenance of the Loompa Taj Public Library, ten million, nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one in revenue, ten million, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one, and expenditures and the fund balance reserve shall be increased by four hundred and seventy-one thousand and ninety dollars. There's no plan to use of the fund balance.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great, thank you.
Turning to the gift budget.
Where did you do that?
I already did that.
Well, that's very wonderful.
We do other, a couple of other motions I saw.
I think that's, yeah.
That should be it. But you guys have to sign those, don't, don't leave until.
Yeah, and we are in, there's nothing removed from the consent agenda, so we're in other. What possible others can be?
I have another.
Joe has another.
I have another. Um, and it concerns, um, a question, do we have footwear regulations in the library? After our last meeting, which I guess was building grounds, a mother brought in two young girls, and one was on rollerblades.
Oh.
And they zoomed into the youth area, and we was like, my jaw dropped. Celia was at the desk, and we're always chit-chatting. And we, we were astonished, and so I asked Celia, is there any regulation on footwear in the library? And she said she's not certain, but she recently saw a family come in in bare feet. So that is my question for the director, or the assistant director of the library.
I am trying to pull up the code of conduct, which is alluding to.
On the top line.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
No shoes?
I thought we had something about no service.
No shoes or.
Appropriate attire.
Yeah, but wheels are a hazard.
We can't ride a bike in here, you know?
Right, now.
Right, skateboarding.
Now, the, the young girl seemed very sturdy on the, on the, um.
They wear the sneakers that you have the kids, they have the wheels in the mask.
Oh, yeah, yeah, wheelie.
No, no, these were.
Okay, actual real case.
Roll, rollers.
These were. I guess, I think Southfield Library had a rule about wheeled devices, but we do not. Um, I would say that that would fall under appropriate attire, or maybe even no damage to the building. Yeah.
So, I mean, I know our carpet is low nap, but I don't think anyone in the youth mentioned.
Even just like on the tile floor. Yeah.
So that was my other.
I think this is a good one for the policy committee to remember.
Yeah, I.
I mean, I'm starting about getting hurt, yeah.
Yeah, I'll mention this to the persons in charge group as well, and just have people be on the lookout for this, and say that we won't, we don't want people rollerblading through the library, and that people shouldn't wear shoes. Appropriate attire, falls under appropriate attire. And then who is the one that would tell them, please do not come?
Whoever the person in charge is at that moment in time. Or any staff really can correct someone's behavior.
Interesting.
Any other other?
I have no other other, I'm otherless.
Okay. Okay, so then our next scheduled meeting is September sixteenth. And there being no further business, motion to adjourn?
Gotcha, thank you.
Is that the motion you were thinking about?
Yeah, oh, is that the motion, I move to adjourn?
Do we eat it, or?
I don't know.
Yeah, that's part of the minutes now.
Oh, yeah, okay. I move that we adjourn at eight-twenty.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
All right.